We'll resume the meeting here. I believe Ms. Barbara, is it? Okay?
My name is Ms. Council Seth Petersen. Peterson, Ken, nice to meet you. My name is Barbara Mayden. I live at 6595 Walnut Drive. You, what you're asking for tonight is a final, and I accept of this final report that you are giving the council, correct?
Correct.
But are you done? Are you done with all your surveying? Are you, are you ready to start this project? I mean, why, how could you ask for the city council to accept your presentation when you don't even have all the numbers? That is a question I'd like you to answer, please.
Sure.
And one of the things that we're coming back to tonight is-
Seth, I'm sorry, Mr. Peters, you need to come to the microphone so we get it on. Thank you.
Yes, we're asking for approval of this design report to move forward. One of the key things we have is a March 30th deadline with the city's PFA funding that they're looking forward. What they have in front of them tonight is the contract for just the water treatment plant design at this point. And so to move forward with a water treatment plant design, the water main design portion would come back at a later date to the council, likely the first meeting in January.
Okay, alright. And then also, you kind of dismissed about the water tower. Not, and I believe it was Ken said that it's not going to be anywhere around South Saunders or North Saunders. That's great. I want to know where that water tower will be located. Is there, I thought they said a water tire, sorry.
It shows online that the water tower is located in Jen Olson's field.
No, at one time he were talking, giving a presentation that the water tower is 145.
Okay, let's-
The new water is going to be 30 feet or something.
Let's say-
What I was talking about there is there is no new water tower being proposed as part of this project, whether it's the water treatment plant or all the water main. We're going to use the existing water towers that's located up on the north system and also in your south system. We'll continue to use those. The 30-foot reference is currently, when your well pumps right now, it pumps out, what happens is your water towers decrease, right? They're, they're a vessel full of water. And that vessel provides pressure to the system. As that tower comes down in level, it sends a signal to the wells, the wells then to turn on.
And I'm curious about that. I just wanted to know where it was going to be located.
There is no water tower being located as part of this project.
Wonderful.
Ms., the, the reference when he said 30 feet, meaning the, the building, the centralized building sits on the ground and then the filters are maybe 20 or 30 feet in the air. In other words, that's the 30 feet that he was referring to.
And I would like to know, have you looked at other routes?
Yes, yes, we've looked at multiple routes. We've come back to council with multiple routes, looked at various options.
And the council-
Seth, can I tack on here?
Yes, because somebody mentioned the pathway.
The Dakota Rail.
Yes.
They require basically alternative routes. Is that correct, Seth? Like if an alternative route, and what is the definition of that? Because if we have tons of residents who don't want this, and it's pretty clear that they don't, does that make this not an alternative route?
No.
No?
No.
No. An alternative route, and Ken, you can speak probably better to this, but along the Dakota Rail Trail Corridor, you can ask for an easement from them to go in that corridor. However, they also ask, and same thing with Three Rivers Park District, anytime you are going across their land or using, or want to use their land for an easement, they ask if there are any alternative routes. And the route, it doesn't matter if the route costs more, has more impacts to residents, if there's an alternative route. Even if it costs 100 times more, they're going to say you have to use that alternative route. So really going down the Dakota Rail Corridor or using some of the Three Rivers Park District is really not a, typically a real feasible option when you have other alternatives out there and there are other alternatives for the city.
And that-
And there's that cornfield or that field that is around South Saunders itself. I mean, you, I don't know if you guys looked into that area. My only concern is council, there's no way that you would be able to accept a final report by any means from this company when their, when their presentation is not completed. It's not completed.
I would, I would agree to the extent that I think it's putting the cart before the horse. If you say, well, let's figure out the route after, afterwards, let's get the building designed. Because Seth, here's the thing, figuring out the route is part of the overall project and that's going to be the clincher, that's going to be the big elephant in the room. And that's going to be the big issue that a lot of residents are going to oppose. That's why I said, we need to make sure that we look at all aspects, that we even maybe reconsider the decentralized system, which is not this costly, would not affect people to this extent. So I'm just saying, in my opinion, and I know I might, I'm going to be outvoted, I understand that, but I, I think to, to say, let's move forward with the building and not know all of the details on the piping, I think we could be going down a slippery slope. That's my opinion.
Sure, and, and that's why at the last meeting, we've been having lots of meetings with city staff. We've been coming back to council throughout this entire process and we've been laying out these alternatives. And at the last meeting, we got direction from council to go with this alternative. We laid out the various reasons in that presentation for that, and so that's why this route is laid out here today.
This lady back here, I told her she could speak, and then this gentleman up here, and then we'll get back to you, Brad, again.
Yes, my name is Audrey Carter and I'm on Basswood Drive. And I feel like this is really, although we've known this has been going on for the water treatment, it feels like this is, well, pardon the pun, but bulldozing it through before it is ready to be considered for a vote. And it does feel like, I agree with Barbara, that you don't even have a finalized thing. And, and I feel like the Saunders Lake has been an area that has enhanced Minutrista. And to have this pan go through without having any finalization, and if it's along the Dakota Trail, then let's fight them, because that seems like the more natural route that it should be. It's already there. And we did see online that it showed a water tower in our backyard on Jen Olson's property. So I want to ask you, what is, what is up with that? When it's on the, online, on the, on the city council site, I don't know, but if you, that's what it shows. So I don't know what these guys-
Well, Christine, I don't see that.
Well-
We saw it.
Audrey.
There is some version of that.
So I want to, I want to be clear on where the-
Hold on, guy, people, hold on.
The water towers are located and so this is, this has been something, and to have such a high cost issue being, I mean, this has just been the past few months to be voted on so swiftly and without knowledge of the, of the residents, to me is atrocious.
Okay.
And let me address the water tower issue, and I don't know what figure we're talking about online. I'm going to turn this way.
Yes, that's fine, yes.
Against the council. What I think it may be is back from the original feasibility study, when we looked at various different options out there. There were the centralized option, which is what the city proceeding with at this point. There were decentralized options. With those options, there were multiple options of new wells, water towers, a multiple water treatment facilities around the city. I believe that is probably something that you're seeing is what those figures would be of looking at some of those. I think one of those, you're talking about Jen Olson's property. I believe there was a potential for a potential water plant and maybe a tower there at some point. Those are all preliminary things as part of, I think that was in May we did that feasibility study. So there were various options that we were looking at. Also to address everyone's issues and the council's issue, I think if you review or take a look, it's, we're not accepting, it's the final report for the preliminary design. And so all we've been authorized at this point is to move forward with preliminary design. We're asking for approval, the final report of the preliminary design. This is not final design. Final design is a whole nother step and a whole nother contract process that we have to go back through with the city council.
I, I understand that, Mr. Peterson. I'm, what I'm referring to is the next agenda item is approving the contract to you to start design, final design work on the building itself when we really don't have the route, if you will, down pat yet. Or, or, and we've heard tonight from residents of some huge concerns, and these are just a few people. I'll wager to say that when other people in other areas get wind, find out, they're going to be equally as concerned. So, just so you know. So I have another gentleman here.
Can I add one thing? There's, I think something we haven't talked about, and that's the southern route. No matter what happens, if it goes back to decentralized, that southern route still has to happen. Alright?
Correct, yes.
Correct, yes, at some point, depending on what version of a system the city would like to move forward.
Unless you're going to go with three water treatment plants and then put a tower in the central system. Somehow you've got to connect the central and the southern system together. So part of this project is including that. So even if you go decentralized, which, you know, I, I don't live on city water, you know? It's not going to be affecting me. We looked at this thing, this, this is the most economical, it's the long-term for the city. Short-term, we can do short-term. We've been doing short-term for many, many years. I mean, not having the central system hooked up to a water tower, that's a good example of very poor planning. I mean, there, the, basically the fire hydrants in that neighborhood are worthless. You can't hook a fire truck to them. They'll last two or three minutes.
There's a backup to mount for that purpose.
Right.
I didn't know if you were aware of that.
Well, I, I know there's an interconnect.
Yeah, there's an interconnect for emergencies.
And I also had talked to Chief Peterson about that, is who has the interconnect key? And it's the public works department. When your fire department goes out at 3:00 in the morning, are your public works people going to be there? So, I'm, I, like I say, I'm, I'm looking at it from strictly long-term planning for this city. What's best for the city, not tomorrow, but 30 years down the road. Because like I say, that development, as far as I'm concerned, should have never happened without being connected to a water tower. I mean, it's just poor planning. But my point was, no matter what happens, centralized, decentralized, whatever, there has to be a pipe going from the southern system to the central system.
Yeah, it would not, and you're correct in that, it would not run through the south and north Saunders neighborhoods, or it would run north.
Right, but it's going to run through-
It would come up hall-steady.
It's going to come through somebody's neighborhood.
Right.
I mean, somebody is going to get affected by this. You know, and if, if, if we're to the point where nobody wants to get affected, then we're going to get nothing done. It's never going to happen.
And that may be, but let's give this gentleman here, thank you for your comments, Mr. Vanderlinde.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Michael Mishock. I live at 6620 South Saunders Lake Drive. And first of all, I wanted to remind everybody that, you know, the, these packets of information are available to the public ahead of time. I want to thank Mr. Barone for, for sending those out. You know, I'm on the email list and anybody can be, be on that email list to get these packets and have a chance to review this information ahead of time, which is great. I wanted to, I hope that, that a couple of these things were addressed very briefly, and I hope I'm not belaboring them, but I'd like to go back to it. There is a proposed route which is east of this, you know, which basically kind of skirts around the whole north and south Saunders Lake. And, and the report from Belton and Mank points out that that is a less expensive alternative, you know, than to, than to going through this neighborhood here. However, the reason for not doing that apparently is not being able to get the, the right-of-way or easements or whatever it is, the access from the Hennepin County Railroad Authority and the Three Rivers County- So I wanted to revisit that and say, again, if we as the residents and the city council come to an agreement and say to those institutions, there is not an alternative. We are not accepting this, you know, it, it's not up to them to say, oh, you know, you've got an alternative. It's up to us to say, no, this is not an alternative. And we want to go, we, you know, we, we want to, we don't want to just accept that so, so easily. You know, I think we ought to go back to them and say, no, that, we think that this is a better place to put this. It's not going to disrupt all this. The other thing I wanted to, to touch on again is the directional drilling thing. Their report again says that, it says on the one hand, directional drilling, of course, is more expensive, and we can probably all understand why that is. However, it says that that will possibly be used, may very well be used where there are existing streets and curbs and yards and so on. Because again, the cost of replacing all of that is going to be really super expensive. So again, I'd like to say, you know, can't we do some more, if it has to be here, can't we do some more directional drilling?
Just to tie onto that, and we had some, during the five-minute recess, we did have some discussion on that. Ken talked about before, there's directional drilling from this point up to here, Ken, is that correct?
Correct.
And then there'll be directional drilling from this point across to this point. Open cut construction would be in this area here. Water main basically would be on the west curb line. And then we have open cut construction from here around this section also, Ken, is that correct?
Up to the west edge, well, the western section.
Up there?
No, left side.
Here, here.
No, I have that question.
Alright.
Why wouldn't you do directional drilling in that area as well?
Because we are reusing the existing water main that is there, so we don't have to put in additional water main. We don't have to put two pipes in the, in the ground, we only have to put one pipe in the ground there. So you could go back and try to put two pipes in the ground, but that would then increase the project costs.
More than restoring.
We are reusing the existing water main that is already there.
The sections of the existing water main that has service connections to the homes, those have to be reconnected to the new water mains. So you'd have a number of excavations required. So the directional drilling in that area doesn't really do that much for you because you have to make all of these reconnections. So the segments where directional drilling is being used is where there aren't any service connections.
Okay.
And how about the other question, the eastern, I said it wrong, the more westerly, the boy in this neighborhood.
The Dakota Rail.
The Dakota Rail.
Come back a little.
I could review that, I mean, we, we made that presentation at the last meeting. I think, I guess I can probably find that on here. We had a, a slide that showed, okay, this is it right here. This alternate one is the Dakota Rail Corridor. And I guess I went the wrong direction to get to where we listed the advantages of each one. Okay, advantages of the Dakota Rail. Obviously, when you look at the map, it's shorter, it's a more direct route from the water treatment plant going up to the northeast corner of the city. Clearly less traffic impact, less disruption to the residents along the route, lower construction and engineering cost, I think we talked about that last time. It's just a straight shot, there's really, you know, nothing there, no conflicts, so the, simpler construction.
Where would it run through?
Mr. Adolf, could you go to that other, go to a map so we can-
Why was that discarded? The construction was-
I was just about to get to that.
Yeah, hold on.
Should I cover that?
Okay.
What, yeah, I think.
We're going to go here now.
Okay.
Somebody wanted the map here, so this is the route along the, the Dakota Trail Corridor would be this route here. So the alternate one started at the water treatment plant, followed the Dakota Rail Corridor to this point, and then went north across private property and across the east edge of the Galewood's farm property, and then connected to the Dutchview.
So, Mr. Adolf, have you talked to Three Rivers at all? So rather than going, let's just say the rail corridor is, is not an option because they want an alternative. Have you spoken with Three Rivers at all to see if you could run along the edge of Galewood's?
We've had two meetings with, and plus additional discussions through email and telephone calls with Kelly Gristman at the Three Rivers Park District. And their position is that they don't grant easements if there's other alternative available. So as I understand your question, going on their property outside of the Dakota Rail Corridor, they, you basically have to prove that there's no other option available in either case.
And how mu- how much proof is required? Because I mean-
Well, they don't, they don't have that same requirement, they just have that policy, right?
Right, so if we tell them that basically our residents don't want it going through their neighborhood.
Doesn't matter.
How are we attorneys to be involved?
I guess my question, no, hold on, hold on, this is, hold on. So I guess my, my question is, and maybe my, you know, is there, or could there be a benefit to talking with them again and trying to work with them? Again, not going through the middle of their property or maybe talking to them about a specific route. It, it seems to me that would be shorter, it would be, it could be, if we work together, maybe we could be of mutual benefit to each other. I mean, is there, I, I'm just trying to think outside the box here.
How about if the council does some of the work and asks the, the other institutions, you know, to work with you on that? Why do you have to hire these guys to do that? That's what we elected you folks for. That's what your staff is for. That's what your city legislator is for.
You're, you're correct, you're correct. I think the council would have to take a position and they would have to direct N or two individuals or whatever, along with staff, to meet with Three Rivers to see if there's that option. And that would be an option. I kind of wanted to throw it in their court first to see what they would say and to see what your experience is. But it seems to me, you know, if, if we try and work cooperatively with them, maybe there's something, I don't know. But I'm, like I said, the final, or the final preliminary design that you're looking for approval or acceptance, it's not really approval, it's acceptance tonight, is one thing. But the second step, approving a contract to start the design of a plant without having these other ends tied up, to me, is, is not being real responsible. I think we need to make sure that we know what route we're going to take. And if we're not going to take this route and we're not going to go this, this direction, then we need to decide when. And I know we have this March 30th deadline, but this is an over $20 million project. I don't think we should say we don't want to take another two or three weeks to make the right decision just because we're looking at this looming deadline. There's other options. And before we, and then I'm going to get to you, Brad, again, because you did have your hand up. So let me just ask staff, if I could. Staff, and I don't know if it's you or Mr. Beatty, what, what options would we have should we not meet the March 30th deadline? And what are the repercussions and what, we're, give me some answers here.
Want to go, Ron?
Take a crack at it?
Well, sure. You know, I, I think what you're asking, Madam Mayor, is financing options. I think the financing options are things that we've talked about either tonight or previously. One is trying to crash the boards and get on the PFA schedule for 2015. Second is, again, trying to take advantage of the cheaper cost of money with PFA, but acknowledging it's not going to happen next year and acknowledging that it's going to take, we're going to be on the following cycle, so pushing everything back a year. The third option is to do alternate financing, get away from the PFA schedule. I mean, it's, the whole March 30th issue is associated with that. We can sell what are called 444 bonds, that's the statutory chapter that we'd be talking about, an alternate form of financing. That, the disadvantage of that is that you will pay a higher rate. I don't know how much higher, but you're going to, I mean, rates are still good, but you're going to pay a higher rate. But to me, the big issue that we've, that some people have touched, touched upon tonight, but I think really needs to be wrestled with, is are you going to do a central system? Or are you going to do something else? A lot of the issues that have been raised tonight go away if you don't do a central system. And if you, if you don't do a central system and go back to decentralized, you cut the cost significantly, because what we're seeing is about half of the cost is associating with the pipes. So you could do alternate financing and pay a higher interest rate, but on a much, much smaller principal amount and come out ahead.
So Mr. Grimm, on it, 404, what did you say? I'm sorry.
444.
444, okay.
Geo, whatever.
On it, so it's a geo bond.
Yeah.
Do we know what kind of interest rates currently, and again, this is, you know, we don't know what they will be doing in, in six months, but do we know what they currently are?
I mean, it's not said it'd be based on the project, so the investors would look at the project. They'd see the amount of water users and the total cost of the project. And, I mean-
And our rate, bond rating?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, sort of.
Yeah. I had, just for comparison, just to look at a, I had elders look at a $10 million bond, which would obviously be more of a decentralized system, and what the difference between PFA and regular geo. And it was about, you know, $460 some thousand difference on 10 million between the two options. Obviously, as Mr. Beatty stated, if you do a $20 million project, you save that $460 some thousand, you know, over, several times over. So that's, um, you know, obviously, you know, you just extrapolate that out on a $20 million project. It gets to be, you know, $900,000 or so difference between the interest rate of a geo bond and the PFA based on, you know, the information they know. So, but that obviously would change probably, you know, the PFA doesn't become important in a, in a smaller scale project. Bigger savings come in as the project mushrooms, I guess, or it gets bigger, at least in my perspective, so.
Right, okay.
What's the delta between alternative one and current plan? If you go back to the, to the easements along the route, the trail, I mean, is that a $5 million savings or a $10 million savings?
Well, right, and then-
Well, can I, can I just talk a little bit about the trail? I've heard a couple of comments tonight already about how we're supposed to have the council or have the staff go talk to the rail authority or go talk to Three Rivers Park and impose our will on them and, and make them let us use that route. That's not going to happen. Any route that's not in their corridor is an alternative, and they'll always tell you that they prefer to the alternative. Now, I know that's probably not what you folks that live in South Saunders want to hear. Now, but that's the truth. There's just no way, and I'll underline no and way, there's just no way you're going to build any sort of water pipelines on the Dakota Rail Trail. It's not going to happen. This is a regional group, they look at long-range planning, not five years, 50 and 100 years down the road. That Dakota Rail Trail is set up to be light rail. We may all be dead in 100 years when they do it, but that's why they're preserving it. If we, if we do want to build under there, and they, even, even if they said yes and we do build under there, and they say in 2080, we want to put our light rail in, we have to dig it all up at our cost. I have no idea what cost that many years down the road, and then relocate it. I don't, we'll all be dead, I understand that, yeah. Well, no, you may not, you may not. I'm, that's kind of what Mr. Beatty was alluding to. Maybe there's a different way of doing this. Decentralized, centralized, that was, we've kind of got on this centralized thing recently. In the last few months, the council's directed us to look at a centralized thing. That's what we do. We follow their direction. They say, look at a centralized plant, we've been looking at a centralized plant.
A decentralized plant would do the same, would have the same effect for the water versus a centralized. I think Mr. Vanderlinde was pointing out that long-term centralized, he felt was better. But I also know that we had another feasibility study, and believe me, I know, because I have read through every single one of them, every single page. So I, there's benefits, there's pros and cons for both. And, and as you get into the project, you see the pros and you see the cons more clearly. So that's why I'm really, really hesitant to say I want to go to the next level and start planning this because I don't think we really have a clear understanding, other than now we know the costs are four and a half time, 4.3.5 million more, and it's probably going to escalate over that. So the cost is a huge concern of mine, because I know the decentralized one was rejected, it wasn't considered because of the costs. But now that we see, get a more accurate picture of the centralized costs, not just in dollars, but the cost to the residents and their properties, I think, I really think the city council, it would behoove us to sit down and, and take another look at it. We don't have to spend a whole year doing it, we can spend a month doing it, or we can spend six weeks doing it. And if we miss that deadline, we go for one of the three options that Mr. Beatty laid out. We, we either wait a year and go for the PFA funding, or we don't wait a year and, as Mr. Grimm pointed out, we'll still be ahead of the game by millions of dollars. So that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Now, I did, I did, if you want to say a few things, and then I promised Mr. Cole he could say something else, so.
Sure, absolutely. I, I can speak later. What I wanted to speak a little bit about, there's a lot of discussion on centralized versus decentralized.
Right.
And we've been proceeding forward with our preliminary design, gathering more information, doing- And we've been proceeding forward with our preliminary design, gathering more information, doing more in-depth analysis. And so with that, we're able to produce better cost estimates.
Understand that.
Same thing that would happen with the decentralized system. And I think, you know, if council and wants to look forward and look at a decentralized system or something, I'd gladly go through that analysis. And understanding that the March 30th deadline may be an issue, there are, there are other funding mechanisms out there. The city can do it themselves, absolutely. I think one of the things on a decentralized, I think one of the things that we pointed out on the centralized system was the long-term benefits of having a centralized system like that. You're using all these existing infrastructure that you have, all your existing wells right now. You're using your existing towers. Doesn't mean at some point in future, you may not have to add some of those, but right now, you don't have to. In a decentralized system, each system is looked at individually, and so you'll need to add towers, you'll need to add additional wells, and those are additional costs. You also have multiple facilities, and so now, when you have multiple facilities, there's additional operation and maintenance. So when we looked at that before, comparing the two at the time, the centralized system was more cost-effective, so.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cole, you wanted to make another statement, and then?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members. So first of all, as others have stated, and for the other citizens who might be watching this later on YouTube, we, we all want better water, so this is not about trying to stop construction on, on the water treatment facility. So the March 30th deadline for PFA is an annual thing, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So I just, I know you stated that. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that. So we, we are in a schedule for this, this round, and we have to get on another schedule for another year. Okay. So regarding the, the Dakota Rail Trail, you know, I, I work for a corporation. We're, we are beholden to our shareholders. And what I'm hearing is shortest path, lowest cost, least disruption, and, and I hear what you're saying. It would be, it's not gonna happen. Well, I deal with not gonna happen every day, and we, we make it happen. So I, there, there is a way, there is a way.
I would respectfully disagree.
Well, I would respectfully disagree and, and say that there is a way. And I think that you have a roomful of people who, who would back all of us up on that. And so appraisals, I wanted to ask, how do you determine what the appraisal value is for replacing the land that, that's destroyed during the process?
Their construction costs, as I said.
What's typically done is that the area that is disturbed by construction is, if it's within the public right-of-way, the city does have the, the right to, to do construction within the right-of-way. If private properties have done improvements within the right-of-way, I guess it's up to the city. Typically, you replace what's there. Obviously, you can't replace mature trees. But you attempt to minimize the disruption to those types of things, to minimize the disruption to items that can be restored, and that's done under the, the project. There isn't a direct payment typically made to the property owner. The attempt is made to restore things, as long as you're within the public right-of-way. You know, I'm, I'm speaking in general terms, obviously.
You're speaking in terms of construction easements or temporary easements, not permanent?
I'm speaking in terms of staying within the city right-of-way.
Okay.
Because I think, uh, some residents feel that they have the property all the way out to the curb line, and actually, as I said, there's about a ten-foot strip there that is public right-of-way.
Right, right, okay. Okay.
So another question I have is on maintenance. So obviously, those of us who are on city water, purchased land, purchased homes, knowing that it's on city water, and if there's an, an issue, a problem, that you'll have to come in and repair it. Somebody will have to come in and repair it. So now we're talking about the possibility of having additional lines put in, so it doubles the chance, or, you know, doubles or triples the chance of, of issues, which would require maintenance, which would require, I assume, the same type of excavation? And we would have to go through the same thing all over again? Is that true?
Yeah, that's the case with, with any utility that you have, whether it's a public utility such as storm sewer. You have storm sewer in your street. You have sanitary sewer in your street. You have water main in your street. You would have now an additional water main, in some locations, as we've talked about there, running through that area.
So you'll have to dig from the back to your house?
To the shut-off. Yep, so, so there's a, there'll be the, the finished water main that's located where it is in the street now. You have a water main in your street now. From that, there is a copper line running to your curb stop and to that point. So for every, for most of those along there, we'd be replacing those from house to house, so you have the new finished water would be going to your house and not just the old raw water.
So my, my last question, and thank you for the time, is the water treatment plant, the proposed site moved, you said about a mile west, was it? From the originally proposed site, and then what, what is that, you said there's impact on the, the water main routes. What is the impact on the water main route as a result of that move? So why, why did it move and what's the impact?
Uh, well, it moved, we just had, in the original feasibility study, we had multiple locations, and I think that's what some of the people are talking about on water towers and things that they've seen. And so we had some different locations, kind of, we picked out in the central area with the possible locations of a water treatment facility. When we actually got into the preliminary design, we looked at some different options, and since the city owns this large chunk over here of this land, it made sense. We also looked at the Ball Field site here also. There's some deed issues with that. We could not go there. And so then the city property became an option, and so we were looking more in this location, and everything shifted this way. Like I said before, though, I noted there are benefits. You know, now you own that, the city already owns that land. You don't have to purchase land for that, so there's, there's that savings. Also, eventually, this system will not be, you know, a static system. It's not just gonna be put it in and done. At some point, there will be additional development, specifically in the southern area, potentially areas maybe around St. Boniface. And there is only a single pipeline now serving this, these areas over here of Minatrista with this thing over here. And ultimately, what'd be nice is to have another line coming down to tie in, to loop the system. It's always nice to be able to loop your water system, and, and that's ultimately what you'd wanna do. By having the water treatment facilities, this location, you're already this far west, and now it's just gonna be that much easier to eventually loop in the future. Not something that needs to be done today, but it's something a long-term plan for the city of Minatrista, it'd be a very nice thing to have.
That would be along the trail, wouldn't it?
That'd be along one tenth. Would not be along the trail. Nope.
So then what? What I'm hearing is, is long-term planning, which is great, which is what we need to do, long-term planning, but there's nothing that needs to be done urgently today by March 30th, other than to meet this, this deadline that we could reset four times going forward. That's, that's what I'm hearing. And I'm also hearing, we're not ready. We're not ready to, to put together a final engineering plan on this. There are still options to be considered. There's, there's public oversight, public approval that, that needs to happen. There's, there's a lot that still needs to be discussed, so, so thank you for the time.
Thank you. I have a question. What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna allow two more questions, and then, then I'm gonna bring it back to the council for. Patricia, Ms. Thol?
Patricia Thol, again. So I, it just occurred to me as you, as you were mentioning where the water main is gonna go. Are the, is the Hunter's Crest neighborhood not going to receive any advantage from this at this point? When the, when the, when the new water treatment facility goes in and the water mains go in, is it not connecting to them?
No, it will be connected to them. Again, council.
There are.
There.
Yeah.
What we're doing here is, from the water treatment facility, there is a line coming down tying into the, what we call the southern system. The southern system includes all of this, Hunter's Crest, everybody down here. This water system right now is a single water system. You have the tower here. You have two wells over here. They're supplying water to the system, to this tower and this tower, and the water line runs and feeds water up to this development, and also comes over and feeds water into the Hunter's Crest development. And so by this water treatment facility, you're connecting raw water main and finished water main down to this area. The whole entire southern system will be treated water. As part of this system, anybody that is currently on water now in Minatrista, so the north system, as we call it, central system, and all of this south system will be all in treated water.
And then just one other quick question. You stated that as a, a part of this existing project, there isn't a, a water tower going in. There's gotta be enough long-term planning going in on that, that it's anticipated that another water tower location has been identified. I think that we owe it to the residents at this point. If we have one identified, that we, where we think it's going to go, where do we think it's going to go?
In the next phase of this project.
Yeah, and what we looked at originally, and it changes a little bit with the amount of population and, and the amount of storage you have, which required there's certain criteria, design criteria that we need to meet with design or with storage. Right now, there'd be no immediate needs for storage. I, I would think at some point in the future, you would look at some additional tower storage maybe down in this area. Exactly where, you know, there were some locations, I believe shown in our original feasibility study, we had some different potential locations, and those are just thrown out as potential locations. So there's nothing at this point planned. This plan takes us out to 2030 to, uh, and what that means for 2030, we were assuming seventy-five starts or households per year coming in up to 2030. And so that's what we're looking at. Up to that point of those seventy-five households, whether it happens sooner or longer than 2030, we have no additional towers showing as part of the system.
And then there was one more question, and?
And that was my question. It was about, so the ones, the water tower that we saw by Saunders Lake, is that thrown out at this point, or is that still a possibility?
Well, I guess anything's a possibility. Right now, until up through 2030, we're looking at, and the reason we say 2030, and, and that's not gospel, it's, it's with looking at the city and what we're using for projections. And so we're looking at seventy-five new connections per year. And as that takes us all the way up to 2030, we're saying, this treatment facility is, is sized to have 1,500 gallons a minute. Adding these seventy-five homes per year and the amount of people that would live in each one of those homes, we can, uh, this facility and this system would handle it out until that 2030, or adding those seventy-five extra homes every year up to 2030. So there would be no new towers as part of that plan up through 2030.
Okay. One quick question.
My name is Brad Gierbaum, and my address is 6482 Will Court. I'm the president of North Saunders Lake, and I, well, I thank Brad for contacting me. I didn't know what the, uh, anything about that it would be coming through our neighborhood at all. And I'm gonna need to go back to my resident, uh, neighbors and find out a little bit, explain a little bit more to them. And that's my questions to the council here, and, you know, through, through North Saunders Lake, it's gonna be all open trench, is what you're proposing with this? North Saunders Lake development?
Um, uh, North Saunders Lake Drive, that portion, right.
And along West Edge, which side of the west edge are you proposing?
We haven't determined that yet. Because we haven't gotten the survey information to locate the facilities now along West Edge. There's a city of mound water main in there also. So in order to say where it's gonna be, we need to know where the existing facilities are.
On the west side, we know we have our monuments. We have, and all of our landscaping there. On the, on the east side is the mound property, is mound. Yeah, I understand you have to do the survey and I have to do the research on that.
I mean, we're, uh, but part of West Edge, of course, is entirely within Minatrista. That's the area that is found, and we're not sure which side of the road. Where, uh, West Edge is on the mound boundary, there the water main would definitely be on the west side in Minatrista.
And that's beyond North Saunders though?
That's right.
Yeah.
So you would think that it might be on the west side, but you don't know. I understand that. Okay.
Okay.
So that's as much information as I can. Thank you.
Mayor, could I ask one clarifying question? I don't know if Seth can answer it. I think the discussion tonight has been, but we've heard a lot of talk about, is there gonna be a water tower? And what you're talking about with a centralized plant, there's no water tower.
Correct, yes.
Through 2030.
Through 2030, for the next fourteen years or fifteen years.
But if, but if the plant, plans change, and we don't end up with a centralized plant, there could be water towers.
Absolutely, depending on what type of.
I just don't want you folks to think that we said no water towers tonight. We're not talking about no water towers for any option. Talking about no water towers for a centralized.
For the centralized option, yeah, good point. Yeah, if you go to a decentralized option, depending on what variation of a decentralized option, there could be some additional improvements, such as water towers or wells required.
Also, different locations for water treatment facilities would have to still be cited also. Sure. It's a lot to track, but I just wanted to make you folks clear.
Okay, with that, questions, comments from the council?
Yeah.
I'll start with you, Mr. Avens.
I agree with the gentleman back there who said, there's always a way. You can always figure out a way. And I think we do need to push back more on Three Rivers and Dakota Trail and have more serious discussions with them and figure out something. Because we have, like, we have, we can, restoring all this is gonna cost money, so we can negotiate with Three Rivers and do a project along where we're gonna be digging up.
Well, you know, but that begs kind of another, have another idea or thought. Maybe Ms. Olson wouldn't like this, but is there any way of going through Jen Olson's property and bypassing North and South Saunders? So, again, sorry, Ms. Olson, but.
I, my mind was really clear about when you talked about going along the Dakota Rail, because I've got almost a half, well, maybe it's not a half a mile, but it's, there's a lot of land. Why wouldn't you ask if I would give up some land that isn't in there right-of-way?
So that's, that's what I'm saying. If you, if you could bring up a little bit larger map, we could show you.
Somewhere in this location in here, are we talking about?
It's right next to, just to the west of South Saunders.
There's a line I can show it to you.
Okay.
There's a different map. It's gotta be a better view. The one we were working with earlier was a better map. Uh, we don't have any detail of, of this area.
And we don't have to, I'm not saying we have to do this tonight or make that determination tonight.
There's also gotta be some agreement from the guy who's got the big stone, Vinny Galt, along there.
Right.
Now, how far from it he would be. He would like to buy my land and put a water park in there. I have no partial to the stone.
Hold on. Okay. Hold on. My, my point is this, I think you kind of prompted a thought. My point is this. Have other, I think there's other alternatives. If the centralized system is what the council wants to go with, I'm wondering, have we looked at other alternatives not going through North and South Saunders? And that, it may be an alternative to go through Jen Olson's property, cross the Dakota Rail, and then go up to fifteen, and then kind of take possibly a route. Anyway, those are things that I think we need to at least explore. If, if the Dakota Rail Trail, it seems, I believe staff is correct, the Dakota Rail Trail option is out. I'm not so sure about Three Rivers option. But if we could explore some other options, these two, and here's why. These two developments, North and South Saunders, they were heavily, especially North Saunders, heavily wooded when they, before they were developed. And South Saunders also had some very lovely trees. And the council at the time really worked hard to preserve those and to preserve the integrity and the character of that area and create these beautiful neighborhoods. And now to come in and, and try and, and kind of potentially destroy some of that is a real concern, and it's kind of a shame. So why don't we, again, think outside the box a little bit, talk to some of the neighboring properties where they're, I mean, Ms. Olson, she's farmed her land for many years, very few trees there. So maybe that might be an option.
Well, when you say some very little trees, what we're talking about, it's all trees.
Okay, well, you're, you're, a large portion of the front of your property is very, and, so.
Sure, and, and?
That's what we're talking about.
Oh, I think Mrs. Wayland has in mind just cutting north-south at your field.
What's that?
I think what Mrs. Wayland has in mind is just cutting north from, into your field, just to the west of South Saunders neighborhood.
Harvey, do you wanna do that?
Well, all I'm saying is.
Does that, can you write down into the link?
No, I'm just saying, let's just, let's, let's just explore some other options. Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I just would like to.
Exactly. I, I think when we looked at the last meeting, we laid out, we had kind of two basic options that we laid out, or two alternatives that we had, and one of the advantages.
And one of the advantages of the alternative we had going through this Saunders Lake development was no easements required from private properties. And so, that was one of the things we looked at, partly because of the timing issue with the March thirtieth and everything else. That design can proceed immediately with the Saunders Lake location. So, that was one of the, one of the benefits of, of the option that we came up with.
Seth, how much time do you need? Like, if we still wanted to make this March thirtieth, when, how much, when would you need to start the final design? Would that be January? Can you do it in a month?
Early January.
So, we'd need to figure out new routes and everything this month?
I mean, early January, but that's still pushing it to whether we ever, you know, meet everything. It's, it's, it's tight. There's, just, just for your information, on the water plant alone, roughly three thousand hours of work is required by designers, technicians, architects.
Seth, how many hours? I'm sorry.
About three thousand hours is required. So, that's, you know, architects, mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, structural engineers, everybody involved with that.
And then, I, I think to your question too, I, again, with this price tag escalating, 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 I'm wondering if it wouldn't behoove us to take another look at the decentralized system and just discuss it, talk it over, see where we're at. Even if that one has increased in costs, even if it's, you know, ten million versus twenty million, and I'm afraid that twenty million is, is going to go up. I, I'm afraid it's going to be higher than, than that even. The cost is becoming prohibitive. That's, that's the real catcher. You know, what can we afford? Brian is talking about a twelve percent increase in water rates every year for the next four, you know, for the next four years, and then another five or six percent. And, I mean, we're looking at a fifty, nearly a fifty percent increase in our water rates.
Figure we're going way more than that.
It'll be about fifty percent over the next five years.
I think it's more like a hundred, closer to a hundred.
Oh, I think that was more when the reverse osmosis was added in. So, I'm glad we took that out of the equation for right now, because I think a twelve percent increase, or eight or twelve percent, it's going to be hard enough for, I mean, this is just a small subset of the city. Once we start sending out bills that have eight percent increases and stuff, we'll probably-
This is all by home costs.
Sure. Sure. But again, we've had, I mean, staff and council, and we've been talking about this since last, you know, December. So, you're not the only group we've heard from. We've heard from people wanting a reverse osmosis, not wanting reverse osmosis, you know, wanting central plants, wanting decentral. And we're all just trying to do, you know, what's best for the, the city, and it's, you know, we've got pockets of everyone, you know. My preference would be to do a decentralized plant more from just a pure cost perspective. I don't want to see people get, you know, double-digit increases to their water bills or whatever, so. And there's a lot of things to consider, so.
And then, again, the other, the other issue is the timing of the bids. Typically, you get your best bids, your best costs, when you bid them out in like January, February, even maybe March. But when you start getting into that April, early May timeframe, your bids are going to come in higher. I mean, that's, that's historical. I mean, that, we know that. And, and then the other thing is, you know, are we better off making these decisions based, I mean, on everything we've heard tonight, along with every, all of the reports and everything? Are, do we really want to jump into a twenty-plus million dollar project? I mean, that's, that would be my question. And I, I don't think there's any question that all of us here want a water treatment plant, and we want good, quality, safe drinking water. There's, we all want that. I think it's just a matter of how do we get there in an affordable, economical way that will meet the needs and demands of the community. So, what Bolton and Mink is asking tonight is for us to accept, we don't have to approve, we're not approving their preliminary design. They're just asking us to accept it. That means basically that they're done with their preliminary design. And, and so, we're, they're asking us to accept that. Mr. Brony, maybe you could clarify that a little bit for us?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. I'll, I'll turn to my colleagues as well to chime in in case I miss something. Basically, there, there's two things that we have on the agenda tonight. As you just mentioned, as you just mentioned, we're going to accept the final report of the preliminary design phase of the water treatment plant and the water main project. That's the first thing that's before the council. After that, what Bolton and Mink has asked us to do, and our suggestion, is to approve a contract for the final design of the water treatment plant only, not all the water piping. And those are the two things that are before our council tonight.
Can you just clarify what accepting it means? So, if we don't like this route, and we think that we should pursue others based on the feedback we're getting, by accepting it, are we accepting this route?
I, I believe you are.
I guess the only comment I would probably add to this, and I'd go back twelve months ago, is I guess we had accepted the preliminary design report that WSB had done on the decentralized system in, in December. And that doesn't commit the city until you do accept the final design. It doesn't really, and until you actually let bids or anything, all you're doing is incurring, you're incurring engineering services and fees, which isn't a good thing to keep, you know, incurring fees and then changing directions. But obviously, ultimately, you'd rather do that than enter into a project that may, or may not be what the council ultimately wants to do. I mean, you know, some, some dollars in engineering services is better than doing a project that, you know, twenty million, twenty-plus million dollar project, if we aren't all on board with that and want to do that. So, we're, this, long story short, I guess, we're not locking ourselves into anything by accepting the preliminary design report. We, it's once you get into final design and start authorizing, going out for contracts, where you're actually starting to get into the meat and potatoes of-
But the final design, I assume, is going to be based on this, so.
At this point, final, final design for the water main would be based on what's presented to you in your preliminary report. Yep.
I would like to expand a little bit on Tyler's comments here. This council has been dealing with this for months and months and months, and hours and hours and hours. I think back of the time when we had the open house here at the facility next door, where we invited all the residents who were on city water to come and join us for information. If you recall at that time, we had asked for the input and recommendations from the residents who are using the water. And of course, there was some conversation at the time. And also, needless to say, the easy thing for this council to do, or would have been to do, had been to do nothing. But it wouldn't be the right thing to do, because we have areas and pockets in Minatrista that have very bad water. I mean, I'm sure some of you, I know you, Patricia, are familiar somewhat with these situations out at Hunter's Crest. It's not pretty. So, we're obligated, and it's our job to come up with a solution, to make this work, and to give our residents the water that they deserve. Okay? Now, we also looked at, and there's been discussions of decentralized and centralized plants. I'm sorry, but I'm very, very strong about the centralized plant, because obviously, it's a whole lot easier to maintain one than it is to five. And as far as cost goes, when you're looking at the cost over a twenty-year period, the cost of that decentralized system is somewhat misleading, number one. Number two, a centralized system gives you the ability to expand a lot easier and a lot more cost-effective. I'm not only looking at the situation here of Minatrista and the development and the growth that's going on here, but we've been able to, this council's been able to do something that hasn't been done for a long time. We have a relationship right now with St. Bonnie. We have a relationship with the City of Mound that we're working together better now than we ever have. And there's some potential of expanding into those areas and, and feeding off of this. That will never happen with a decentralized system. So, yes, the cost is somewhat, you're, we're talking about this cost, but we're talking about a twenty-year thing here. What would it be with a decentralized system? I've also looked at the studies where this was actually cheaper than a decentralized system. So, let's not, let's not jump into something. I know for a fact that the decentralized system, or the centralized system in the big picture, easier, cheaper to maintain and run. So, now, we've got a problem. The problem is, let's figure out how to make this work and run our lines, so we don't have the impact that's going to impact our neighbors in South Saunders here and the people that live in South Saunders. That's very important, and I agree with you. I live right across the street from you, and I have a lot of friends that live in, in Saunders. One's sitting right there. Okay? So, let's figure out how to make it work, and let's not just shove it down there, but let's figure out a way. Jen Olson, thank you. Maybe there's an alternative there. Let's check it out. Okay? That's my opinion.
Why has it taken a year finally? I mean, I said there's a cornfield right next to it.
We have alternatives that we have to, and I think we should look at. But I think going the other way of not centralized would be a huge mistake. And we've got hours, I, I mean, this council's got more hours in this thing than, than you can imagine.
So, for whatever reason, some of us have, are late to the party, and I appreciate you guys. I think, I really want to commend the mayor-elect, as I understand, and the council for allowing, giving us voice. And I very much appreciate it.
That is so important, because I want to add one last thing. When we had the meeting here at the next door, we asked for input. We sent out cards as a survey to check which would you prefer. It came back with a decentralized, I mean, a centralized system, gravity feet. There were options there of RO, and I know the RO got extremely expensive, decentralized system, RO, you know. So, there were four choices to check. Our residents, including all of them who are on water, and again, we've got a couple of pockets here that are bad. Hunter's Crest, Painter's Creek, they're bad. South Saunders is not great, but it's a lot better than those. So, it came overwhelmingly back centralized gravity feet. So, let's not destroy and set up, let's not make a war here between our communities that what we live in. We need to try to please everybody, and we want to please you also, but let's just figure out how to do it. Thank you.
Just for correction, I'm not mayor-elect.
She is the mayor.
I am the mayor.
And she's doing a good job.
Thank you. This is my very first night, so pardon me if it's not going as smoothly as we would like it to. I think, you know, we have differing opinions, no doubt. And the current council, my colleagues here, have spent a lot of time on this. I'm not saying they haven't. And they did look to voter, to the people, to see what their reaction would be, or what their, what their, what their preference would be. I think a couple of things have come up since then. One, at the time, they were looking at a sixteen million dollar project for a centralized system. And I think the decentralized system was somewhere in the vicinity of eight, ten, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it was more.
So, maybe it was more.
It was more.
So-
I think, well, if I can clarify it, the way, it would be eight to ten in this phase or whatever.
You'd just be doing it over multiple phases. When you look out through twenty thirty, which-
There you go.
My personal opinion would be, and I've made this analogy to the council before, and, but the, you know, council, you guys get to decide. But I would rather see a city phase in and build as your city grows, and that's what a decentralized system can do, versus the city I live in built huge, and it's good for the fifty, fifty, hundred years, and the current residents are stuck paying the high water rates. So, that's, you know, just my two cents. The decentralized system could be eighteen, twenty million. Once you get to twenty, thirty, more people will be here to pay for it by then, but-
Right, so you're not comparing apples with apples, by the way. You're not comparing doing a phase in versus the one setting here to expand.
It's going to be about the same cost in the long term. I think their report had sixteen million versus eighteen million. I think the centralized was sixteen, and the decentralized was eighteen. Well, now, so they'd have to go back and run the numbers. Is that eighteen now for decentral twenty or twenty-one? In the long run, they're probably about the same. It's just a matter of-
Right, I mean, the comparison, comparing apples with apples, the decentralized, if you were comparing the needs of what was going to be the output of it, the decentralized was going to cost more than the centralized.
Per their report.
Over the twenty-year period.
By twenty thirty, yes.
Correct.
But the current residents would pay more in the short term based on doing it more upfront. That's a choice, I guess, that, yeah, what, what, what do you prefer?
So, I'm not saying that there's a wrong or a right, but, and, and I'm not saying that the centralized is, is correct or wrong. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, I really think it would behoove us to take another look at it and make sure that we're still on track, making the right decisions, inappropriate decisions, the decisions that we can afford. I, I don't want to get the city in a bind. I don't want to authorize a twenty-one million dollar project today that we may not be able to afford. That, that's my biggest concern. If we can get good, clean water for the long haul, and we can do it in phases, and we can spend eight to ten million now, and then another five million in a few, you know, down the road, and so on, you know, maybe that's something at least to consider. That, that's all I'm saying. But with that being said, we're still back here where we need to either accept or reject the final report. My only question is, staff, if you could, it says that this is the final preliminary design for, with Bolton and Mink, for water treatment plant and water main project. So, do we really have a preliminary design? Is that, do we have a preliminary design for the water main project? That, that would be my question.
Yes, you have what's presented to you in the report.
So, this is the route, this is the route, and that is the preliminary, preliminary design?
Correct.
Okay.
What, what have we spent up till now on this? Do you know? You got a rough idea?
You authorized a preliminary design contract with us for about three hundred and five thousand. I suppose we're about two hundred into it, somewhere in that range. I can't remember where we're at, what we've sent to, you know, and we're, have surveyors out daily now, obviously garnering information, so.
If, if we step back and reevaluate it, how much of that can we, if we went to a decentralized, how much of that money can we recoup, or how much of that information can we use, or is that basically gone? You know what I'm-
Well, I, I guess the, we've talked about, I don't know where the clicker went, but the south water main portion, you know, depending on what type of decentralized system you're looking at or other type of options, hybrid options, whatever you want to call them. You know, if, if this is the route, and there's no other, I mean, this survey work's been done, you know, that's useful information. If you decide, we're right now in this area surveying through here. If you're not going to use and go and do any work in that area, that survey work and preliminary work that we've done in there would not be useful.
So, it's just in that area?
It would be in the areas, you know, if you're going to put water main in any of these corridors in Ken, where are we? We're about up to here somewhere, I suppose.
Right.
And we've done all this. And we've done all this. And have we done this?
And even if we-
Not yet.
Not yet. So, we've done this to here. So, if we're going to put water main there, no matter what, which likely, if you're going to tie, you know, the central system, and with the decentralized system that's been looked at, there's multiple options. Do you look at just a specific decentralized system for the central, or a central plant here, and then a plant for the south, and then a plant for the north? Or do you look at tying these systems together, the central and the south? I mean-
Can you do the central without a tower, though?
If you tie it to the south.
If you do the, if you do a central all by itself-
Right.
Then you need a tower.
You would need a tower, and you would need an additional well there also, because you have a single well source.
Right, so.
So, there'd have to be a top water tower?
For the, for the decentral, for that, that plan.
Yep.
The, the one that was in the feasibility report, if you recall, from WSB, did, tied, they did two, two systems. They tied the southern system with the central system, somewhat similar to the route that you see coming up from the north, to the well that's in South Saunders. Then what they did is, there's nothing going through South Saunders as shown here, and there's nothing going down Game Farm Road and all of that. Another system was being built right next to the two wells in the northern system. So, all the systems would be fed by those two plants.
And, and our feasibility study also looked at that, that, we called it a hybrid option, kind of a combination centralized and a decentralized option.
Right, so.
So, if we, like I say, if we back up, as far as I'm concerned, if we pass on the PFA money, I mean, that's, you almost can't pass on that. I mean, it's large dollars. So, basically, then we're going to be putting it back into the two thousand sixteen cycle. And, and I'm okay with that. I, I just want people to understand the construction costs are going through the roof right now. We, we just seen that. It went from sixteen to nineteen. A decentralized plant is going to do the same thing. It's not going to be what we originally talked about. But by pushing it out another year, that's probably, I'm, I'm in construction. I see right now, construction prices are just, they're going through the roof right now, because there's a shortage of contractors, because so many contractors, when the housing bubble burst, they got out. Now, there's, you can't find a contractor right now. So, this will continue. And like I say, and I'm okay with that. I just want people to understand that if that cost continues to go up, we may end up with a decentralized system that could be close to that, you know, nineteen million dollars when we get done. And like I say, I'm okay with that. I just want people to realize that that's a possibility, you know, if we, if this gets pushed out another year, so.
Mr. Avins, no, hold on, hold on. No, council first. Mr. Avins, you wanted to?
Well, yeah, I think the central is still worth pursuing, but I don't think as it's proposed in here, we'd want to accept. I think there's still a lot of questions, and then the cost. At sixteen, I think it was doable. At nineteen, it gets to the high end.
It gets, exactly. That's a very good point, yes. And then nineteen, it's not nineteen, it's nineteen-five projected, but then there's other costs that aren't included in this.
Right, as we've
And, for instance, I mean, just, there's soft costs that aren't included in this. There's the bonding cost. There's also the hiring of an easement agent. That's not included. So there's other things that aren't included in this. And then, I think your point is well made, Mr. Vanderlinde, that prices go up, and, and they're gonna go up, and we're not gonna be, unfortunately, even, even if we meet that March thirtieth deadline, we're not gonna be in that primary bidding climate. We're gonna be in that secondary, you know, it's gonna be down there in April, May area, and that's not a good bidding climate. So we'll be at a disadvantage in that respect as well.
Just one comment I can make to that. The PFA funding cycle, it lends itself because that's just how it works. So the PFA funding cycle, you submit plans and specs, typically late March, and then they take their approval process through the Department of Health, and then you have a couple months for that. So you're typically bidding in that May-June timeframe regardless, and that's with any PFA project. And so on water treatment plants, wastewater plants have the same type of funding mechanism that they can use. Contractors are out there and are aware of it. I would agree with you, though, the best time to bid is early in the year, right? That's what it is. But the funding cycle, unfortunately, through the PFA typically doesn't really allow that.
Well, let me ask you this question. If, for instance, and I know that this is not possible, but let's just say you had your plans and specs ready to go the end of January, and then you submit them to, to the Department of Health, would, are you saying they wait until March thirtieth? Okay, so then, then you would get your plans and specs approved at that time, and then you could start.
Yep, and actually, so if you really want to just take a full step back, let's just, let's just walk through this for a second. So we keep harping on March thirtieth, and I think Councilman Vanderlinde, you bring up a good point, too, the construction costs. And I've told everyone that construction costs go up every year. Some years it's less, some years it's more.
Actually, they went down in oh eight, and
Well, some years, some
Sorry.
Actually, materials probably didn't, materials went up, labor went down, and so you saw almost a net zero. Anyway. But what you see is construction costs, I can basically, construction costs will always go up. Interest rates, what are they gonna do? I don't know. Are they always gonna stay low? I hope they do. I think it's great. But probably not necessarily. However, so March thirtieth is this hard deadline from the PFA right now. If the council decides, hey, let's pull back, we find out, you'd have to reapply, try to get on the PFA funding list, if that's a funding mechanism the city wanted to move forward with. You reapply. You find out in late September whether or not you've made that list. So if you were proceeding forward and saying, we're moving forward, whether we have PFA financing or not, you know, from March thirtieth, you could say, well, we're gonna try and go for, because right now you're on the twenty fifteen list for getting monies. You could say, let's try and go for the twenty sixteen list, and you can actually, you'd know by late September that you're on that list, and you could then proceed at that point and try to hit that more favorable funding cycle by doing something like that. So do you lose a full year? No. Do you lose nine months? Probably, you know. And so you're still gonna be bidding, though, in twenty sixteen is when you'd be doing, gonna construction, so you have the construction cost escalation. You also have the issues with interest rates. What those will do, I don't know.
And if you weren't successful in getting in September on the PFA list, you could pursue some other funding option?
If you weren't eligible, you didn't make the list, you weren't ranked high enough on the list to get funding, I believe the PFA this year, the Department of Health is raising their from five points to ten points, I think. The city scored five points last year. I don't know if they'd score ten points, so you may not even be eligible for PFA funding next year. So that would be the other piece that we need to take a look at there.
I think we'd have to take a look at that, yeah.
But that would be, that's the risk you run. Right now, you know you're on the list, so if you follow the protocol, you know you'll be eligible for the PFA loan program.
Also, I believe we were approved for sixteen million, so now, what if the project ends up being twenty-one million? Where
You're actually approved for like twenty-two million because it was based on the original feasibility that we did way back in May, because that application process was due in May and June, were the two letters, the project priority list and the intended use plan. Only, it was the summer when we came back, July, August, when we revised those numbers.
Okay, all right. Okay, so it sounds to me like we're not quite ready, I could be wrong, but to accept the engineering report, or did you want to accept it? What is your pleasure, council?
Do we make a motion not to accept it?
Or to table it, or not accept it, or whatever, I guess.
If you do table it, that's fine. Then I think you need to give directive to the engineer as to what you would like them to do. Or maybe with staff's recommendation, they could help you.
I think it's still worth pursuing the centralized system, but trying to find another route.
Okay.
But I also think I'm gonna be not here, and so it might not be worth pursuing, ending in letting the new That's the multimillion dollar question. I, I don't want to proceed with this project and waste more taxpayer money if come January, it's all gonna get thrown out anyway. So that is the million dollar question. Are we wasting our time here even talking about this? I don't know if we can get that answered right now. I don't want to waste taxpayer money if this thing is gonna get shut down in January.
Well, here's, here's kind of a comment and something to consider. I don't, you know, the new council, myself and two other council, new council members are gonna be sitting here making the future decisions on this project, and I don't think it's quite fair that, that we hand, that we're handed a project that we may or may not agree with. I'm not saying we won't. I'm just saying, I think in all fairness, it's in the best interest of the council and of the community in order to give us a chance, and the new council members especially, a chance to get up to speed on this, to take a look at both options, to take a look at the financing, to take a look at, at the costs and all of that, and be able to make that decision because we're the ones that are gonna be sitting here, me at least two years, and they're gonna be sitting here four years. Now, if, Mr. Peterson, I keep wanting to call you Mr. Seth, I'm sorry.
That works too.
You know, here's the thing. You said you could probably get it done, but it's also my understanding that you, there's some wiggle room here, that if it's not a hundred percent finalized by the end of March, you can still submit your plans and maybe get an extension. Is that correct?
Not typically. That's a hard date for the, for the public facilities, for the Department of Health.
Okay, I've talked to other engineers, and
I'll tell you this. If you were, be submitting plans in March, late March, I would be lying to you if I said we don't continue to work and tweak on those plans until bidding.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Yep, but they are, those are pretty darn close to completed, fully completed plans, all the electrical, engineering's done, structural, architectural, all that is there.
Okay. And then, so that, that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. The other, the other thing to consider is, if we do go out for bids in May or June, when it's not a great bidding climate, then do we have the option of waiting until January or February, or, so we would have to bid
There was a big deadline.
It would have to be that?
Here's, here's the issue with that. Here's the risk you take, is that you are currently on the PFA, the funding list,
For twenty fifteen.
The intended use plan for twenty fifteen.
Okay.
You have to have that project bid, what they say is by June thirtieth,
Okay.
And awarded by that timeframe, so you meet it in the fiscal year of, of, of that for the twenty fifteen money. If you want to go beyond and bid, say, something in the fall or in December, January of, you know, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, you have to reapply for the list.
Okay.
And so there is no guarantee that the city would get back on the list and be approved on the intended use plan. I believe the points is going up to ten as the minimum for the Minnesota Department of Health. The city this year made the list at five points, which was, they funded every project that got points. The Minnesota Department of Health did this year for the funding.
What's that ten based off of, just more?
What they look at is, they, they look at the amount of dollars coming in and potential projects that are out there and what they have, and they say, okay, we only have so much money for, to dole out as part of the loan program, and so they set it at ten points. On the wastewater side, it's much more competitive, much bigger projects oftentimes on the wastewater side, and they set that somewhere up in the thirty-point range. So they use a different point system, but just to let you know, that's, that's what they're doing.
Okay. One more question.
Thank you. My comment really was related to what Mr. Avins said, about wondering whether or not the central plant, which I agree feels like a good idea, how, you said that there was some comment that it was scalable. Is it overbuilt at all now for current needs? Or is it a hundred and twenty percent the some anticipation of future needs, and I know you guys are better on the tree a thousand times. I just wasn't here.
Yep. What we're looking at goes back again to, remember, we're talking about that year twenty thirty, and I say twenty thirty, whether it actually happens in twenty thirty, twenty twenty-eight, or twenty thirty-five, but we're looking at those seventy-five home starts per year, and that's what that's based on, looking out at twenty thirty, meeting that demand for that population, so.
And I know that there's that whole Kings Point thing with a thousand some homes down there.
Right.
If it's overbuilt, then any of that holding tank can be added at a later point when you have more homes. Instead of two banks or something, you can make a one bank if it's possible, feel a billion or so up that thing. But I, I like the idea of the central plant, that if we're trying to make it more reasonable for the number of homes that we have now, I just wonder how scalable is?
It's, it's very scalable, the size we have right now, and if you looked at it, we feel very comfortable with the size that it's at right now. The original was for a much greater population projection, so we brought it down considerably smaller, and it's set up. That's the nice thing about a centralized plant, really easy. We can just, we have enough room out here, right over here to this direction, to the east, for that facility. Basically, you just flop it over, and you build new filters, new clear well, reservoir, and you can double it faster, or do even more.
So now, the design is for, is for current immediate needs. It's not overbuilt for a thousand homes that aren't there yet?
It's projected out for the next fifteen years.
Yeah. So it is built for the thousand homes over the next fifteen years.
Fifteen years times twenty.
Is it twelve hundred residents that it's gonna affect right now, that's gonna be paying for it right now? Is that the truth?
Well, let's
Or is it, you know, and the projection of having a thousand now, that aren't gonna hold up, but it's the twelve hundred residents that are gonna be paying for it right now, for projected years, for future?
Ms. Maud, why don't we have our finance director answer that briefly?
Sure, yeah, that's, that is correct. Right now, we have about twelve hundred water users or properties that are connected to the water system. So yes, I guess, in, in, in the short term, it would be built, it would be, maybe twelve seventy-five would be the next year, then thirteen fifty, and then, and that's how it would be. But the way council directed it at the time, and, and, you know, what was presented was to build it through twenty thirty. So at, at first, you probably are gonna have more capacity than what we need, and then it'll catch up by twenty thirty.
I'm just looking at the cost, and maybe twelve hundred people paying for a twenty million dollar
That's where we've talked about
Twelve hundred users.
Twelve hundred users, yeah.
Not people.
Yeah, twelve hundred properties, so X, you know, take, three thousand people on the system.
But they have wells in Minnesota that are not affected by it.
Correct.
They don't have any gate, anything extra.
Correct. Yeah, it's all water users.
How many do you have wells? I just want to know. Just out of curiosity. I'm just curious, how many have wells?
I think we all
I have city water.
And any new construction gets hooked up.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think your point is well made, Ms. Maud. And yes, I am on city, I am not on city water, but I am very concerned about our residents having to pay very high water rates. I am very concerned about that. But let me, let me make a suggestion, if I could, to kind of move this on.
Make a motion?
I mean, okay, I'm sorry, did you make a motion?
No, I said you could make a motion.
Well, let me just make a suggestion and see where it goes. What I would suggest is that we, we table, if you will, to accept the final report, direct Bolton and Mank to see about an alternative route, as we discussed this evening, through other people's properties, if you will. And then they bring that back at the very first meeting, and I would suggest, I, I don't want to, here's what, I don't want to do it at a work session. However, we have probably a lot on our plate that first meeting. What I would like to suggest is that we have it at a work session, maybe starting at five or four thirty, it will, time to be determined, and that will bring the new council on board. That can bring that, they can get up to speed between now and then, and then those decisions could be made at that very first meeting. And I would like to also suggest that we videotape that work session. And also invite the public, of course, to be there to listen in. Would that be something that this council would be interested in?
How much would pursuing other routes cost? Are we talking ten thousand, one thousand, just to see, like?
Tim, it depends how many we're looking at. I think it, from what I'm hearing this evening, it appears we're most concerned with the South Saunders, North Saunders Lake area, right? Because that seems to be fair. So it would be pursuing, you know, various alternatives for that, you know, looking at those parcel properties, you know, there's a, you know, you can zigzag about any kind of way you want it in there. So I think you just start looking at it. It would have to be discussions with property owners. I mean, that's where it's gonna take you. Ken, am I, am I off base here? You're gonna have to have, start having discussions with property owners. Are they available to talk? Are they available to meet?
Just, no, hold on, hold on.
So I, I think those are the things that we would be looking at, to, to do, and start contacting those. There's, looks like there's ten or twelve in there, whatever it might be, and having those conversations with them.
The one, one thing I'll bring up is, tonight's group is the South Saunders group, but as we move more north, the next group will be, I don't know, pick a street that we're up there.
Yeah, that's one of the biggest attractions of the centralized plant, is that when you have to run all this pipe, you're always gonna have people that, you know, I wish we would have known more about easements and the issues that we were, when we were talking this summer, because this is, your, your group's just gonna move, pretty much.
Yeah, you guys will leave in the next group that, that get the letters. They're gonna be here filling these seats, saying the same thing. We don't want it in my area. We want clean water, but we don't want the pipes in our area.
Say, Seth, one, one quick question. When we were talking about South Saunders, the existing water main that's there, if we do figure a way to go around it, is that water main large enough, the existing water main? Because I know that was something we talked about. That's why we were swapping
Swapping the pipes.
Swapping the pipes, because the existing water main that's there now is not large enough. So I don't want to end up going around it and then finding out later that the pipe that's there isn't big enough, so we gotta tear it all up anyway.
Is that true, Ken? I can't recall.
Well, as I understand, based on the discussion on our back end, the alternative to going through the North Saunders would be to do something through this area. Is that
Possible.
So, and then, still make the connection here. So be looking at something like this, perhaps. And as far as the central area, they did a connection on the south end, and then if we were this area, it's a treated water main, we'd make another connection here. So it would be two feeds, it'd be a looped system. So with that, I think the mains would be adequate in size.
That would
We'd have to do some monitoring, but that would be my guess at this point.
And something that staff did bring up, because tonight I had a conversation with someone that knows an individual that's a little bit further north, and was very upset about finding out that this line was proposed to go across their property. So this, this thing has just kind of started, like you say, as we work.
We work north, north, we're just gonna
Right, it's just
Move new residents
Right, there's gonna be different faces here.
Upset people.
So that begs the question, then, do we want to take another look, another look at the decentralized system? Because you're not gonna have any of that northern piping then. I mean, is that another option?
We can. The only downside to that is, you know what's gonna happen. Your guys' phones are gonna start ringing off the hook because there's people been promised, you know, fix, they've been, fix our water, fix our water, and they find out now that it's gonna be another possible year. And like I say, you know, I am not on water. I feel for people that have bathtubs that look like this. I mean, it's brown. But I'm okay with, with backing off on it, but I just want But I I just want people to understand that there is, you know, there's gonna be some negative impact to people.
Unfortunately, I think we put off a year at this point anyways.
Yeah.
But it's not, keep in mind, it's not a year.
I don't think we have to be put off a year to our point earlier, as far as if we if we do the geo-water revenue bonds. If it gets down to a nine, ten million dollar project, the interest costs aren't as big a difference anymore. That number really comes down, just based on having ten principal versus twenty, twenty-two million of principal. So I think you can still do something this year, it's just you'd have to forego the the PFA, which you lose four hundred, five hundred thousand of interest, but you you save ten million in principal. I mean, I'd rather take the ten million in principal, I guess, you know, in my.
You're you're not, the ten million dollar principal, you're not throwing it away. You're getting value for that.
Sure.
We just, you have to figure out if if you can afford it.
Right.
Well, that's, yeah, I'm more saying for the water rates and stuff, yeah, yeah.
So, back to your suggestion.
Just hold on a second, Pete, hold on. We're gonna have the council has, and then I'll I'll give you about five minutes, okay? Tara and and Barb, and just hold on, okay?
Back to your suggestion. I I was mostly going, I'm not sure it's worth having them pursue routes.
Okay.
Cause it sounds like the future council will need to have a longer discussion, especially with the twenty percent increase in cost.
Right, right.
It may be worth just tabling, cause I don't think we'll meet the PFA, even if we tried to go forward tonight with other routes.
Yeah, that's a good point made. Okay, so then um then we could table this and make sure we bring it back. And like I said, maybe a a work session um prior to the first meeting in January. Um, with um just, so is that is that kind of the direction you'd like to go? Or would you be?
Yeah.
Okay. But why don't you make a motion? And then there's a couple people, I'll give you five minutes, okay? Okay, so why don't you make a motion then, Mr. Abens? It would be to um maybe table, accepting the final report.
All right, I'll make a motion to table accepting the final report for the preliminary design and also to table the approved contract for final design.
And can we ask that, in addition to that, that we ask the engineer to stop all work on work related to this? So we don't have any more bills incurring?
And I'll add that Bolton and Mank should stop all work until further direct.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? I'll I'll second that. Um, is there a further discussion? He's, no, he's not tabling the motion. He made a motion to table accepting the report.
And that's not discussed?
Uh, Mr. Beatty, could you weigh in?
That that's a different kind of motion. They're not tabling, it's not a motion to table something. I mean, this is a motion that can be discussed.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay. Um, is there any more discussion? Mr. Vanderlinde, do you care to weigh in? Okay. Mr. Aben, uh, Mr. Christians? Ms. Donahue? Any comments? Okay, all right, well, then I'll call the question. A motion has been made to table um accepting the final report and preliminary design and to table approving the contract for the final design. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye.
Seconded the motion.
I did.
Lisa Wayland.
I did. Um, okay, I'm sorry then, all those in favor signify with aye again, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Um, all those, I'm sorry, can I ask? Did you, um, aye, aye, okay, Mr. Christians? Aye, okay, so that was five ayes, zero noes. Okay, now, um, with that, I'm, there's three people in the audience. Again, we're, I'll give you a few minutes, just if you'd like. Let's start with Tara, please.
I just wanna.
And then Mr. Peterson, I'm I'm gonna give you an opportunity to, uh, Ms.
I just wanna make one very quick point, and that is that with no disrespect to Mr. Barone, that we are currently operating without a city manager. And we are handing over a contract to what is essentially a corporation for profit for them. And I think it would be important for the citizens to have a full-time city manager on staff to look over plans and be, you know, another voice, opinion, professional opinion um to weigh in on this.
Yeah.
All that I would ask, that the council would consider waiting until we have a full-time city manager back on the.
Um, yeah, just for clarification, Mr. Barone is the interim, he is full-time. He is full-time, he's very well qualified, and that will be an issue that we will take up first first thing in January. So, um, yeah, um, and then Barb, and then the lady behind.
Well, just next time, there is a proposal, I wanna know how much each property owner, how much money they will get for their damage.
Okay.
Because that is very upsetting to me. You're gonna tear up my lawn, my irrigation, my French drain.
Sure, okay, I understand.
I don't want him to say, well, whatever, it needs to be in writing, and this is what we will reinforce.
Yeah, I think that it's real difficult, but we will, we will try and have the engineers do the best they can, okay?
For help, for a number.
Okay, and then the lady behind you, I'm sorry.
Yes, and I guess I have a consideration about the decentralized um. That that's gonna come up again, there's gonna be water towers and.
Well, that will all be.
Right in our area, and and I have a very great concern about that.
Okay.
Essentialized is what you said, that people had preferred and.
And that will be coming up for discussion, and I would all encourage you to stay tuned um and and be at that work session so you can hear the discussion. And I will ask that it be videotaped, so it's on YouTube, so you can also see it then. So, um, Patricia, um, council member-elect, yes.
Can I comment?
Okay.
Everybody's supposed to be commenting on the podiums. Um, I just wanted to, uh, let's see, what I want to say. Oh, um, uh, if there's a special meeting, uh, the first meeting of January, the uh, uh, council member-elect.
We will make sure.
Mortenson and myself would not be able to participate in that unless we're.
You will make sure that you can participate.
Were sworn in first.
Yes, yeah.
Um, and then also to put Counselor Vanderlinde's, Mindat's, or any other counselors or staff or residents. Um, uh, you you wondered if if this idea would be shut down or that. Um, uh, as far as the water treatment facility, I've said all along, I'm for the most cost-effective, non-invasive water treatment solution. And so whether that is centralized or decentralized, we'll be discussing that further. And I will be voting based on uh the information that I that I've obtained over the last two years of sitting in on council meetings, uh, the information, current information provided by the city staff and the engineer and uh any other, listening to any other experts, and then uh voting my conscience.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
I I appreciate that. I mean, I I didn't mean shut no water treatment, I mean, just stop it right now.
I understand. We need to be efficient and effective and utilize our taxpayers' dollars well.
Cause I don't wanna pursue a centralized treatment plant if in January we're gonna say, no, we're not gonna do that, we're going decentralized.
We're all here to serve on behalf of the residents.
Right, yeah.
Okay. So, um, with that, I do wanna thank all of you for coming and for your interest in city business. And I would highly encourage you to continue to stay abreast of all of the issues, not just of the water treatment issues. Um, so we're gonna move on to um our administrative items. Uh, we have our approving of our claims.
I just have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Seth.
No, that's fine.
I'm sorry.
I just wanna clarify, um, I understand the tabling of the issues. Uh, Mike, I think you added a clause in there about stopping all work at this point. So no surveyors, stop whatever we're doing for surveying on any of these routes?
I think so.
Okay. What about questions? So what I mean is stop, is that what you mean by stop? If you guys ask me a question and you want me to work on some design or some alternate things to take a look at?
I think what we'll probably do, if I um step in here, if you'd like, um, we'll be talking with staff to see what information you need to bring to the table in January.
Okay.
So that, and so any information, um, and so I think staff will be in contact with you.
Okay, so if I hear if staff asks me, please go and do a calculation for this, I'm authorized to do that, that that's okay? That's still part of, we lump that under the preliminary design contract that we have.
Yes, we are going to need information.
Okay. I I just wanna be, cause when you said stop, and I'm like, well, that means, I don't know.
Well, stop pursuing the corridor through.
The corridors at this point, and there'll be more information requests. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I assume, just one other thing, you'll get back to us about, we have a meeting for tomorrow, whether we do that or not.
Yeah, I think we need to talk, so.
All right, yes, I'm sure you'll be in contact and be talking with staff.
All right.
All right, so then, approving um claims. Questions on the claims?
I made a motion to approve the claims as listed.
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the claims as list as presented. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Council reports. Uh, nor, I'm I'm a guest by default on Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities. Um, I don't know if they have a December meeting or not. If they do, I I will attend. We do have a police communications committee on um at eight thirty on December ninth. I do plan on going to that. I have not had a chance to contact Minnehaw Creek Watershed District to let them know that I will be the new liaison, at least for one month. We'll see what happens in in uh January. Um, but I did have an opportunity to go to the public hearing for the Pinehurst Creek Watershed Commission for their upgrade of their third generation plan. Um, and it was interesting, and and I've talked to some of the people over there. And you're you're probably more aware of what's going on there than than I am. Um, you've been there for the past year, but um, and I've I've had meetings with, um, I did meet with Bolton and Mank for several hours. I've met with, I've met with staff, I've met with all of our department heads that are here this evening, and I've also met with WSB. I've tried to get caught up on all of the issues. So I have been busy, I've met with a number of residents, and I also am going to be meeting with several of the mayors in the area as well within the next couple of weeks. So with that, Mr. Vanderlinde?
I have none.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Mr. Christians?
The only comment I have is, uh, and uh, Mike, you and I discussed this, the dues for the WCC, West Stock Community Commerce, which I've been representing the city of Minnetrista and Christians Inc. for the last two years. Uh, have you submitted the uh the sixty-five dollar fees for doing that yet? And are we gonna continue on that as we have in the last?
Uh, Mr. Christians, I have not submitted that. I apologize if you were um, uh, thought I was going to do that. I I, like I said, um, when I, when we brought, when we spoke about this last time, I I believe the representation for the WCC from this city council is determined in January of every year. And I and I wasn't sure if, maybe you will be, but I wasn't sure if you and Mr. Vanderlinde and now Ms. Wayland, plus the two new members, I have no idea how you're gonna divide up all these committee and other organization representatives, so.
My my only point is, I I think it's extremely important that Minnetrista continue to be a part, as are the other communities, such as Orno Spring Park.
Yeah, and I.
And the other ones being part of the WCC, it's very, very, very.
And I wanna continue that relationship, but I'm not sure exactly who will be the rep from the council.
Yeah, from my standpoint, I'm.
I know you're there anyway, right.
Um, so Mr. Christians, I think your point is, well, may just for clarification, can you say what, tell me what WCC stands for?
West Stock Community Commerce.
Commerce, okay.
Which also sponsors and did the Christmas tree lighting.
Right, yeah.
Spirit of the Lakes, all the events that take place in the community.
It, so if we pay the annual, are the, when are they due? No, but when are they due?
Now.
Okay, um, if we pay the annual dues, that doesn't necessarily say who we're indicating. So maybe we just wanna pay that annual due.
Yeah, I think we do.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, why don't we do that? And then in January, we decide.
Who's going to rep it? Could be Mr. Christians.
And it, yeah, so, um, all right.
Will do.
Arlene, any, oh, you had nothing, and that was, um, Mr. Aben?
I just wanted to say, good job today.
Thank you.
It was a heated discussion, but you kept it moving and kept order. And then also, one of the things that came up was communication problems, which in the minutes, the Saunders is very hidden. I wonder, cause the packets are all public, and they do get sent to people who are on the email list. But, um, are they on the website?
They should be.
We should put it with the minutes, the packets, so that when they're reviewing the minutes, they can also click into the packets.
Um, just so you know, communications is a big issue for me as well. And I have talked with staff regarding improved communications. And so I think over the course of the next few months, whatever, we're gonna be working on figuring out how we can communicate better and more frequently um with the public. And I'm not saying you've done a bad job, I'm just saying you can always improve.
Yeah, and I can totally understand how people felt blindsided, because that was Saunders was decided last week to look into that or pursue that.
Right, right.
This was the next council meeting.
And I won't be like the local weatherman where they always try to blame it on the technology, but I will mention that there are some technology limitations that we hope to upgrade in twenty fifteen. So I hope this be, this communications issue becomes less and less of one, so.
Uh, staff reports.
Um, Mayor, I do not believe we have any staff reports. Anybody have anything?
I would have one item, just so the council knows.
Oh, that's right. Yep, thank you, Paul.
Um, the South Bay Sewer Restoration Project, um, is substantially complete. That is functioning without temporary pumps. It's flowing by gravity again, so we will have to do some erosion control and some uh restoration in the spring. I think there, we got got that done with little frost issues, but um to go out there and try to get erosion control and that type of thing, there's, you know, two to three feet of frost in the ground, so be better to do that in the spring.
Good, all right. Anything else?
No, we don't have anything, Mayor.
Well, okay.
And we get, well, I know everyone wants to get out of here. One thing, and I've talked about this for a couple of years, and I know the rest of the council, we've talked about it. And I know everybody's always wants to save money, wants to be more efficient. And it's something that was brought up multiple times, and it, we keep coming back to this fleet account for our fuel. And so a couple of months ago, I went out, you know, this thing I've been pushing and pushing, and nothing happened. And the council has directed staff to look into it. So I collected information from our basically three suppliers, Holiday, Quick Trick, Super America. Um, thinking that, you know, this this is an easy way to save money. I mean, this is just, this is almost free money. I mean, they'll negotiate on the price, they'll negotiate on, um, they give you discounts on our car washes that we use. You can negotiate for free ones. I was a little disheartening when about two weeks ago, I got a call from, I think it was Super America, and said, well, have you guys decided if you wanna look into this thing? And I'm like, nobody's contacted you? And he said, no, nobody's talked. Can we please look into if we can save some money? I mean, I'm assuming we use, you know, we gotta be using a hundred-plus gallons of fuel per day, right?
I'm not exactly sure what their mom does, Mr. Vanderlinde.
You figure if you got a squad on, you know, so I mean, you times that, times three hundred and fifty-two, that's a lot of fuel. And if you can save a nickel a gallon on it, it adds up in a quick hurry. And it's just, and they'll they'll keep track of your fuel in different ways that you want. You can keep track of it by a personal ID number, by a car number, they track it. I mean, it saves, it it probably can save us money, cause I'm assuming somebody in our our staff is doing that already. They know that.
Yes, for the PD, we have staff that does that. We have a log that we keep, and then that's turned in, and our secretaries track all that information for us. Uh, we currently do get a fleet price on our fuel, and uh, without doing the research, I don't know if Holiday or Quick Trip or SA could beat that price. But we do have a, uh, receive a fleet price for our fuel.
Right, and but like I say, I'm a- asking, I've supplied all the information, the contact list, is just look into it.
I have that information there.
Who would be the individual on staff that should be looking into that? Would that be the lease, or would that be Public Works or?
Probably be all of us looking at it, yeah.
Could you look into that and then get back to us um at the January meeting with that?
Sure.
And then just bring a little report back, a little, you know, tell us what what you're currently paying. And then also your fleet, your fleet, does that also then go or expand over to Public Works? And who all can take advantage of that?
Well, yes, I, uh, Madam Mayor and members of the council, uh, we certainly use the most unleaded fuel. Uh, Public Works uses very little.
Mostly diesel.
Unleaded, they use the, obviously, all of the diesel. So it's, uh, we all use fuel a little bit differently, but nonetheless, I think it's possible we could benefit.
It would, it would be hard to do with Public Works because of the the equipment. But it's, you know, the MPCA is coming down a lot harder on on fuel storage. Um, right now, if you store anything over thirteen hundred gallons, um, you need to be permitted. And the more fuel you store, the more those permits are. So if we can, you know, like I say, maybe we won't save a nickel, but I think we owe it to our residents to look into it. It's a simple thing to look into.
Sure, I'd, I'd, we'd be happy to do that.
Sure. We'd be happy to do that, and I think we own some of that equip, fuel equipment out there, and we lease some of the equipment. So certainly, we could look into that and get you a report.
Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you. With that, I'm looking for a motion.
Please motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.